Our regular session, it is 7:00 PM on Monday, February 10th. This is our regular board meeting. We'd like to thank everyone in the audience for joining us and anyone who's joining online. Thank you so much for taking the time to join us and I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, on our agenda, we'd like to welcome the OCHS Black Student Union to talk to us about Black History Month. And your microphone's already turned on, so you don't need to touch it.
My name is Mila Pearl and I'm one of the co-presidents and the media manager.
My name is Elbethel and I'm one of the co-presidents of the Black Student Union.
I'm Miss Kana and I'm the Activities Director.
We started this club about, I think it's almost a year ago now. We brought the idea to, I think, one of the teachers at the time, who no longer works there, but we brought the idea to him and just in thought that we needed somewhere that we could all connect. And it took a long time to get together, but it eventually happened. And at first it was pretty awkward and it was definitely like a lot of different kinds of people coming together, but I think over time, we've definitely grown a lot as a club and it's become more of like a family-like community and I think we've grown a lot as a club.
Okay. So recently, we've taken our Black Student Union to a Black College and Career Fair so they can be able to have the opportunity to connect to schools. And recently, like one of our members received a $3,000 scholarship and an acceptance to Portland State University.
That's a picture from one of our meetings. We have grown a lot in size, definitely. I think it started pretty small and then it got a lot bigger over time. I think our main focus is just trying to get people to kind of see it as less of like, I don't know, it's hard. I think a lot of people see it maybe as a more negative space, but I think we just want everyone to kind of find it as a space where they can, you know, be with people who they have one thing in common with, which is specifically difficult for black kids in Oregon City because there's not a lot of us. We definitely, our goal is to bring people together, but also amplify our voices because we're not so often heard. I think it's definitely hard for admin to deal with issues revolving like racism at our school. It's definitely a touchy subject and it's hard to be handled correctly. So I think just trying to work with admin and find kind of a safe space and a good way to go about solving issues is something that's really important for us and we haven't really gotten a chance to do. So I think we've been a lot more student-focused and I think that's something that we're aiming to do is work with admin more to, you know, see what works for us because I don't think we're really on the same page right now. Those are photos from our Christmas celebration meeting where we had a gingerbread house building contest. I think it's just about like really bringing us together and feeling more like friends than anything because it's definitely, like I said, very different kinds of people. So I think bringing people together and like making it feel like somewhere where, you know, you can be open with each other about the issues that we face is really important for us. Like she said, we were able to go to the Portland Black College and Career Expo where there were, I don't really remember, but there were a lot of colleges that were there offering scholarships and offering to just talk to you about your plan in college and how you can use race to advocate for yourself and to have a well-set career because it's definitely hard to be viewed as the same. So that was something that was really cool and we're definitely still looking for more opportunities like that to kind of reach out to, especially the older group of our club, just to like let them know that there's a bright future for us.
So one of our future goals and plans for the rest of the school year is to attend a Black History Art Museum so we can like deepen our understanding and appreciation for African-American history and culture within our club. And later, at the end of the month, we're planning on, we're planning on attending like a Zoom webinar for Black leaders within our club so we can learn more on how to like amplify our voices within our school.
And now we'd like to invite you to ask any questions. Questions from the board?
Are there similar groups then in the middle schools or have you talked about going to like the elementary schools and talking to kids in those ages?
I think that's something that we should really consider. I think we've been trying as of right now, since it is something that we more recently started, trying to get our core group at the high school strong and make it a strong community so we can reach out to other communities. But I think that's definitely something that we are considering, yeah.
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you guys for coming and I want to say that I think coming before groups like this is a really good way to kind of jumpstart advocacy skills. So this is a good way to start that, so thank you guys for coming.
I just, you go ahead.
I'll follow up. Are you sure?
I just wanted to ask if there's anything as a board, you know, here the school board impacts policy change and is there anything we can do to support you?
As of right now, I'm not sure. I think just making sure that there are certain situations that are handled correctly. We obviously as students can only do so much and advocating for ourselves is obviously something that we try our best to do, but it only goes so far. It's unfortunate, but it's true that we don't get listened to very often, just as students as a whole. So I think, I'm not sure what you can do, but just making sure that like we're on the same page and, you know, our concerns are being taken seriously.
Great, thank you. Debbie, did you have a question?
Kind of, you answered part of it by just your recent thing, but you had mentioned that you're not on the same page on certain things. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that in regards to what do you feel that you're not getting supported on and what do you think that you need to thrive, I guess you could say?
Yeah, I think especially in recent events, there's definitely been issues with words and just in general attitudes towards certain things where people have felt very uncomfortable and very like unsafe and not respected. And I think that people have gone to administrators at our school and voiced their concern, which doesn't happen very often because a lot of people are afraid of saying something and speaking up. So I think there are a few people who have and those few people who have spoken up have been sort of shut down and were taken in a very dismissive way and just told them that, you know, words and, you know, behavior like that is very common and that it is sort of, I guess, overused and that there in a way, I guess, just isn't much they could do, which I don't think we agree on. So I think talking about that mostly, just making sure that, you know, we can see things that can happen that, you know, aren't being done.
People being accountable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else from the board?
And it's not this overall, other than going to an admin, is there ways to report concerns or what channels are you familiar with then if you have an issue?
From what I think from what I've seen is just going to teachers and admin is really the only option that we've been shown. Obviously, I'm not aware of all the options, but that's what we know of us now. So, I mean, if there are more options that we don't know of, that'd be great to learn about. Thanks.
Thank you guys for being willing to come and talk to us about it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
We have Stephanie Phelps joining us for President's Day.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm Stephanie Phelps. I'm the current acting principal at Gaffney Lane Elementary School. And I'm just going to speak a little bit about President's Day, the holiday that we're celebrating and recognizing this coming Monday on the 17th. It originated, I'm just going to have a little brief history and you can pull back your elementary trivia, but it was originated to recognize George Washington's birthday and now has just become a holiday where we recognize just the accomplishments and legacies of American presidents throughout history. To be frank, there's not a ton going on around President's Day this week or in the past couple months or so. We are really digging into kind of state standards right now, but of course, US history is a diploma requirement. And so I spoke to Jeff Dolan and he sent me a bunch of stuff that his students are doing up there. So here's some screenshots of some projects that the students are doing. One is around recognize, or there was a project for students to look up for presidents and talk about their accomplishments. That's the one to the left with Barack Obama. And then there's a screenshot of a presentation of John F. Kennedy's life, his accomplishments as well as his assassination. And then there's a trifold of Franklin Roosevelt there that a student made and then some posters that have been up around the school and the US history classes as well. And I wanted to shout out, although this is not about President's Day, our fourth grade really wanted me to share that they are celebrating Oregon's statehood this month because in 1869, we became a state in February 12th, I believe. And they are really just digging into Oregon and its government. They're going to take a virtual tour, private tour of the state Capitol this week. And they are talking about, you know, beavers and Doug Furr and all of those things that we think of when we think Oregon in its relation to just Americans coming here and establishing a spot here. Just some ideas to do for the day off. While the library is closed, if you go over the weekend and collect some President's Day books, reading them with your family at home would be really awesome. And there's just so, there's a plethora of accessible, fun books around presidents and America as well as even for ladies. You could cook lots of recipes from, that are, there's some cookbooks that presidents, of presidents' food, sorry. And then also you can encourage your child to think about what they might do as a president if they had that opportunity, maybe act it out, write about it and just that kind of stuff. And then spend some family time really just encouraging people to take this opportunity to think about their families and kind of the history of America. And that's really all I have. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Not questions, but I saw that there is an If I Were the Mayor contest, which is not the president, but local. So four through 12 graders have an opportunity to share their hopes and dreams if they were the mayor of Oregon City. So that might be another idea, something to do. Then that's run by the Youth Commission from Oregon City. So it's another leadership opportunity for kiddos if they wanted to get involved.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to recognition and good news in our schools, we have an Avid presentation with Dr. Crane and Christina Magna. And it looks like some students are here.
Yeah, I'm really good at this part. I'm going to pass it on to someone else who knows more than me. So Christina Magania and her team and some students are here and we're excited to hear from them.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, of course. Hello, my name is Christina Magania. I serve as the Avid District Director for Oregon City. Joined today, I have Megan McCormick from Gardner Middle School and Carol Lee Tigerson from Oregon City High School who serve as the Avid Site coordinators. And then we have some wonderful students who we're going to hear from in just a little bit. Avid's mission is aligned with Oregon City's mission as well because we all know that we are a family like community. And I think we've grown a lot as a club. Okay.
So recently, we've taken our Black Student Union to a Black College and Career Fair so they can be able to have the opportunity to connect to schools. And recently, like one of our members received a $3,000 scholarship and an acceptance to Portland State University.
That's a picture from one of our meetings. We have grown a lot in size, definitely. I think it started pretty small and then it got a lot bigger over time. I think our main focus is just trying to get people to kind of see it as less of like, I don't know, it's hard. I think a lot of people see it maybe as a more negative space, but I think we just want everyone to kind of find it as a space where they can, you know, be with people who they have one thing in common with, which is specifically difficult for black kids in Oregon City because there's not a lot of us. We definitely, our goal is to bring people together, but also amplify our voices because we're not so often heard. I think it's definitely hard for admin to deal with issues revolving like racism at our school. It's definitely a touchy subject and it's hard to be handled correctly. So I think just trying to work with admin and find kind of a safe space and a good way to go about solving issues is something that's really important for us and we haven't really gotten a chance to do. So I think we've been a lot more student-focused and I think that's something that we're aiming to do is work with admin more to, you know, see what works for us because I don't think we're really on the same page right now. Those are photos from our Christmas celebration meeting where we had a gingerbread house building contest. I think it's just about like really bringing us together and feeling more like friends than anything because it's definitely, like I said, very different kinds of people. So I think bringing people together and like making it feel like somewhere where, you know, you can be open with each other about the issues that we face is really important for us. Like she said, we were able to go to the Portland Black College and Career Expo where there were, I don't really remember, but there were a lot of colleges that were there offering scholarships and offering to just talk to you about your plan in college and how you can use race to advocate for yourself and to have a well-set career because it's definitely hard to be viewed as the same. So that was something that was really cool and we're definitely still looking for more opportunities like that to kind of reach out to, especially the older group of our club, just to like let them know that there's a bright future for us.
So one of our future goals and plans for the rest of the school year is to attend a Black History Art Museum so we can like deepen our understanding and appreciation for African-American history and culture within our club. And later, at the end of the month, we're planning on, and we're planning on attending like a Zoom webinar for Black leaders within our club so we can learn more on how to like amplify our voices within our school.
And now we'd like to invite you to ask any questions? Questions from the board?
Are there similar groups then in the middle schools or have you talked about going to like the elementary schools and talking to kids in those ages?
I think that's something that we should really consider. I think we've been trying as of right now, since it is something that we more recently started, trying to get our core group at the high school strong and make it a strong community so we can reach out to other communities. But I think that's definitely something that we are considering, yeah.
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you guys for coming and I want to say that I think coming before groups like this is a really good way to kind of jumpstart advocacy skills. So this is a good way to start that, so thank you guys for coming.
I just, you go ahead.
I'll follow up. Are you sure?
I just wanted to ask if there's anything as a board, you know, here the school board impacts policy change and is there anything we can do to support you?
As of right now, I'm not sure. I think just making sure that there are certain situations that are handled correctly. We obviously as students can only do so much and advocating for ourselves is obviously something that we try our best to do, but it only goes so far. It's unfortunate, but it's true that we don't get listened to very often, just as students as a whole. So I think, I'm not sure what you can do, but just making sure that like we're on the same page and, you know, our concerns are being taken seriously.
Great, thank you. Debbie, did you have a question?
Kind of, you answered part of it by just your recent thing, but you had mentioned that you're not on the same page on certain things. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that in regards to what do you feel that you're not getting supported on and what do you think that you need to thrive, I guess you could say?
Yeah, I think especially in recent events, there's definitely been issues with words and just in general attitudes towards certain things where people have felt very uncomfortable and very like unsafe and not respected. And I think that people have gone to administrators at our school and voiced their concern, which doesn't happen very often because a lot of people are afraid of saying something and speaking up. So I think there are a few people who have and those few people who have spoken up have been sort of shut down and were taken in a very dismissive way and just told them that, you know, words and, you know, behavior like that is very common and that it is sort of, I guess, overused and that there in a way, I guess, just isn't much they could do, which I don't think we agree on. So I think talking about that mostly, just making sure that, you know, we can see things that can happen that, you know, aren't being done.
People being accountable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else from the board?
And it's not this overall, other than going to an admin, is there ways to report concerns or what channels are you familiar with then if you have an issue?
From what I think from what I've seen is just going to teachers and admin is really the only option that we've been shown. Obviously, I'm not aware of all the options, but that's what we know of us now. So, I mean, if there are more options that we don't know of, that'd be great to learn about. Thanks.
Thank you guys for being willing to come and talk to us about it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
We have Stephanie Phelps joining us for President's Day.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm Stephanie Phelps. I'm the current acting principal at Gaffney Lane Elementary School. And I'm just going to speak a little bit about President's Day, the holiday that we're celebrating and recognizing this coming Monday on the 17th. It originated, I'm just going to have a little brief history and you can pull back your elementary trivia, but it was originated to recognize George Washington's birthday and now has just become a holiday where we recognize just the accomplishments and legacies of American presidents throughout history. To be frank, there's not a ton going on around President's Day this week or in the past couple months or so. We are really digging into kind of state standards right now, but of course, US history is a diploma requirement. And so I spoke to Jeff Dolan and he sent me a bunch of stuff that his students are doing up there. So here's some screenshots of some projects that the students are doing. One is around recognize, or there was a project for students to look up for presidents and talk about their accomplishments. That's the one to the left with Barack Obama. And then there's a screenshot of a presentation of John F. Kennedy's life, his accomplishments as well as his assassination. And then there's a trifold of Franklin Roosevelt there that a student made and then some posters that have been up around the school and the US history classes as well. And I wanted to shout out, although this is not about President's Day, our fourth grade really wanted me to share that they are celebrating Oregon's statehood this month because in 1869, we became a state in February 12th, I believe. And they are really just digging into Oregon and its government. They're going to take a virtual tour, a private tour of the state Capitol this week. And they are talking about, you know, beavers and Doug Furr and all of those things that we think of when we think Oregon in its relation to just Americans coming here and establishing a spot here. Just some ideas to do for the day off. While the library is closed, if you go over the weekend and collect some President's Day books, reading them with your family at home would be really awesome. And there's just so, there's a plethora of accessible, fun books around presidents and America as well as even for ladies. You could cook lots of recipes from, that are, there's some cookbooks that presidents, of presidents' food, sorry. And then also you can encourage your child to think about what they might do as a president if they had that opportunity, maybe act it out, write about it and just that kind of stuff. And then spend some family time really just encouraging people to take this opportunity to think about their families and kind of the history of America. And that's really all I have. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Not questions, but I saw that there is an If I Were the Mayor contest, which is not the president, but local. So four through 12 graders have an opportunity to share their hopes and dreams if they were the mayor of Oregon City. So that might be another idea, something to do. Then that's run by the Youth Commission from Oregon City. So it's another leadership opportunity for kiddos if they wanted to get involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to recognition and good news in our schools, we have an Avid presentation with Dr. Crane and Christina Magna. And it looks like some students are here.
Yeah, I'm really good at this part. I'm going to pass it on to someone else who knows more than me. So Christina Magania and her team and some students are here and we're excited to hear from them.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, of course. Hello, my name is Christina Magania. I serve as the Avid District Director for Oregon City. Joined today, I have Megan McCormick from Gardner Middle School and Carol Lee Tigerson from Oregon City High School who serve as the Avid Site coordinators. And then we have some wonderful students who we're going to hear from in just a little bit. Avid's mission is aligned with Oregon City's mission as well because we all Avid's mission is aligned with Oregon City's mission as well because we all want to prepare students to succeed in their very bright futures.
So in order to develop future ready students, avid school wide, so having avid school throughout your whole school, all your teachers, all your classrooms. It supports setting and implementing site goals, which we align to our school improvement plan. It shapes professional development for our staff. So it gives us a path of where we can grow. It emphasizes common language throughout our school. So all of our teachers are speaking the same language, which is helping our students be successful. It gives lots of opportunities for students to have career and college explorations and it impacts each and every student in our school, in our district.
I get the privilege of introducing our students. So. We have tonight Angie Armenta, Lucia Sanchez and Hector Pena Lopez and they are all seniors. They all have plans after high school already and they're going to share those with you. And we have eleventh graders Aubrey Kingston-Both and Zane Renfro.
Within the avid elective, our students learn skills needed to succeed in their higher education, preparing them for college. Our program runs a lot of different activities in order to assist our students with organization, studying and time management skills. Developing these skills with fellow students that they grow within the year, within every year of their high school education, fostering a supportive community and a sense of belonging. Avid also brings simplicity to complicated steps in order to help apply for college, for example. Parents with college students right now and or seniors know how hard it is to apply for FAFSA, OSAC. Oregon Promise, scholarships, grants and other ways to save large amounts of money for colleges and trade schools. With avid, we help our students turn these confusing twists and yet or turns our confusing twists. And turns it into simple yet necessary steps we need in our journey to success.
There are several several key differences. There are several key differences between middle school and high school avid classes. In middle school, students focus on developing foundational skills for academic success in high school. Such as goal setting, effective note taking and other strategies within the WICER process. In contrast, high school avid mainly focuses on college and career exploration. Gradually shifting their focus towards the college application process. In their later years, many will learn about grants and scholarships and other resources that will support their future academic and professional success. Avid fosters a learning environment that encourages students to seek out more advanced and rigorous coursework. As a junior this year, Avid has allowed me to hone in on what I want in a university and the steps I need to take to get there.
Hi, my name is Lucia Sanchez. Avid has been my main helping resource throughout the college application process. They taught me about scholarships and the Common App, making everything so much easier. The support and community that I have found in Avid has helped help me stay motivated and organized. It's guided me. In getting strong letters of recommendation and writing a compelling college essay. Thanks to Avid, I have felt confident and prepared every step of the way on my path to college.
Hi, my name is Angie Armenta and in addition, Avid has been a tremendous support for both Lucia and me. Through Avid's guidance, we improved our study habits and effectively navigated the college application process. As a result, we both did get into University of Portland Nursing Program and received a one hundred and four thousand dollar scholarship. To use over the span of the four years we go to. Thank you. This incredible opportunity wouldn't have been possible without the resources and the encouragement from the avid program.
Hi, my name is Hector Pena Lopez. I've been in Avid for four years and as a senior now, I can confidently say that. This program has made a huge difference for me. School was never easy. I struggled and didn't know much about college or how to prepare for it. But with Avid, Avid gave me the tools and support that I needed to succeed. Teaching me organization skills and study skills that helped me throughout high school. Without A- without Avid, navigating high school and planning for my future would have been overwhelming. Now I'm set to attend PCC and the Fire Academy. Aven- Avid didn't just prepare me for college, it gave me the confidence to believe in my own potential. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Okay, students, so is there a skill that you didn't know you had that you developed during Avid? That you cannot live without now?
For me, one of the biggest struggles I had was organization and time management and they really helped with that.
For me personally, I'm a first gen generation, first generation student. And so I believe just like the whole support aspect. My parents couldn't unfortunately give me that just because of the different systems, I guess it is from like country to country. So when I joined in the sixth grade, I have been in the sixth grade, it has been such a genuine help to me.
I also am a first generation student. My older sister is in college right now, so I have a little bit more help. But my parents don't have much that they can do to help me. Also, just like public talking, I don't think I would be here right now. Without without Avid or all my teachers and what they've done to help me.
As a student with a family that prioritizes my college career in the future. I would definitely say that fostering the community that I have cultivated. Within my three, my five years of being in Avid, it's honestly amazing to see my peers grow with me. As I continue on my college.
Very similarly to Aubrey, I definitely appreciated and understood like the support aspect of Avid. I feel that the skills that I learned in supporting other people really like helped me throughout high school. It also helps me learn about like other people in my life outside of school.
Thank you.
Well, first I'd like to congratulate all of you guys. It's very exciting. And then I have a question for your teachers. Which is how are kids identified for the avid program?
We have an application process where students apply to be in the avid elective through a short questionnaire. And then they go through an interview process. We really aim to accept all students into the program. But those two things help students see the impact and the importance it has already in the real world of how do you apply to something? How do you show your dedication? How do you show up and explain who you are? We have some other numbers here. I know we're short on time, so please feel free to cut me off because I know you have resources to this and there as well. Part of the reason we believe that Avid is so impactful for our students is that thirty-seven percent of our staff are trained in over twelve hours of avid best practices. And so like Megan was saying, these best practices are happening throughout the school. Kids are hearing consistent language, which really helps them. All of our students receive five plus career and college experiences, no matter if they're in the avid elective or not. Because we are all trained in these practices. And then we've seen some really encouraging results as well. In regards to our OSAS scores, Tomwata's science team has dedicated themselves to interactive notebooks, collaboration and inquiry. And we've seen over a five percent gain in our proficiency scores over the last three years. And Gardner's Language Arts Program has dedicated themselves similarly and seen some amazing growth. Some other avid elective success numbers here. This shows comparisons between students. In the avid elective at the high school and those not in the avid elective. We see that students across the board in Avid complete courses for college entrance exam at higher rates. On average, their attendance is higher. They take courses of rigor. They earn more of their credits attempted. Graduate more on time and are accepted into two and four year colleges at a higher rate as well. And we won't go into details of this, but all this happens because over the summer administrators, teachers, site coordinators get together. And we plan out how we want this to happen for our students and we write goals and we review them weekly at meetings, monthly in staff meetings. And our professional learning centers around them so we can make all this happen for our kids. Thank you so much.
And you called it an elective, so it is, the students do need to take it as one of their choices.
Yes, it is an elective at the middle school and the high school level. So yeah, students opt into this opportunity during the school day.
Is that seen as maybe a barrier to to growth or I'm just curious on, yeah, as far as. Making the the program bigger.
I can take that question. It has been a barrier to growth when we were on the trimester schedule that we currently are on. The move to semesters is really opening up spaces for students and we're already seeing an increase in our numbers. I have twice as many applications right now as I had last year. And we have just started the forecasting process. So currently we have one section of ninth grade Avid. And I believe next year we will have at least three. So that's a huge shift. And it's really because we're moving to semesters.
How many kids are in the program?
Currently, we have eighty-seven. Sorry. Eighty-seven at the OCHS.
We have two hundred at Gardner.
And at Tomwata, we have smaller numbers. It's the only, they can only have one elective at Tomwata. And so we have forty kids in our program.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for joining us. We really appreciate it. It's really exciting. Next up, it's we have Classified Staff Appreciation Week coming up. Lisa Norman?
Yes, I just want to remind everyone that March third through seventh is our Classified Staff Appreciation Week. And I just want to make sure that we take the time to honor and show our appreciation for our classified staff and all that they do. We know we can't function without them. So they're very important members of our learning community, all the way around. Oh, I also wanted to add, we have four hundred and thirty-nine classified staff members.
Moving on to patriot input.
Yes, you have some this evening. No electronic and no Zoom. But you do have three on the list and I'll go ahead and read the expectations before calling them up.
Okay, thank you.
The Oregon City School District Board of Education highly values public input in making important decisions that affect Oregon City's children and community. To ensure the public has the opportunity to offer comments during board meetings and to ensure that the board can can conduct the important business of the district. Speakers must observe certain basic rules of conduct. The following guidelines apply to all public comment. All members of the public attending board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. No hate speech is allowed. Individuals are not permitted to engage in conduct that interferes with the ability of other individuals to observe the board meetings. Interferes with the ability of other members of the public to offer comment to the board or interferes with the ability of the board to conduct its business. Members of the public may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs. But the board will not hear complaints concerning specific school personnel or other authorized individuals. Complaints of this nature shall be addressed through Public Complaints Policy KL dash AR. Please keep your comments concise as you will have three minutes to speak. You will receive a one minute warning. Please be aware that the board will not be responding to your comments. This is a time for them to listen. And please state your name and affiliation with the district once you approach the dais. I would like to call Mandy Philpott to the front.
Good evening, board members and cabinet. Some of you are very familiar faces to me. It's nice to be back. I am here, I'm a parent for one. I am a former board member. I'm also a resident of Oregon City. And I'm here tonight to be a mouthpiece because I received quite a few phone calls. From staff members and teachers related to the issues of school safety. These staff members were reaching out to me because they know I'm a lawyer. And because they know as a lawyer, I keep secrets for a living. And they are concerned that they don't want their identities revealed. They fall into two categories. One category are people who believe that if they speak up, they might be retaliated against. By administration or peers. And the other category are people who have spoken up. And don't feel like they're getting attention. The concerns that they bring up are lack of discipline or consistency with discipline. In the schools and in particular, Oregon City High School. The recent event where an adult brought in a weapon, a firearm into Oregon City High School is concerning. For sure. But this is more on a basic everyday level that they bring up concerns. Things like students congregating in bathrooms, using substances, vaping, using marijuana. Students not attending classes, just roaming around hallways. Violence that they feel is tolerated and unaddressed. And the inability to essentially ensure safety.
One minute.
Of students, thank you, of students who are there and not causing disciplinary concerns. So I am here as a mouthpiece for those individuals who've reached out to me. And want you to know as board members and the cabinet. That while incidents like someone bringing in a firearm into the school makes the news. There are things that are happening on a daily basis that need attention and need to be addressed. And it's your employees and staff members who are afraid to bring that to your attention. And that is why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to call Andrew Philpott to the front.
My name is Andrew Philpott. I'm a parent of a child that goes to Oregon City High School. I have two that graduated. Good evening, members of the board, faculty and concerned parents. My name is Andrew Philpott. I'm here tonight because I deeply concerned about the safety of our children Oregon City High School. I attempted to follow the district's complaint process by emailing the high school principal on January twenty-first and have yet to receive a response. It is unacceptable that in this day and age, basic security measures are not being followed to protect our children. Complacency has set in. And the incident on January sixteenth proves that. School doors are still not being properly secured, allowing unauthorized individuals to walk in unchecked. In twenty twenty-three, a school newspaper article in this high school addressed this exact issue citing staff concerns that students were letting people in through exterior doors. Rather than requiring entry through the front vestibule. Yet here we are two years later, still dealing with the same problem. Worse yet, when a stranger entered the school on the sixteenth, the administration's response highlighted an improper security posture, in my opinion. A hold was enacted, a procedure meant to clear hallways for a medical emergency or a spill in the hallway while classrooms carried on. As usual, the correct response should have been a lockdown. Several students know, knew who this individual was that came into the school and the potential danger that they posed. Whoever decided to enact the lowest level security measure or not raising it up to a lockdown should be held accountable and receive additional training. Schools are required to conduct at least two lockdowns per year. Why not err on the side of caution and stop worrying about creating undue stress or trauma? If you're wrong, I would rather have my daughter feel momentary stress than potentially lose her life. What training is being given to staff to ensure they respond effectively to security threats? It's reported that several teachers told students then in a staff meeting the week prior, they were informed that there may be some hold drills during the week of January sixteenth. This led to them to believe that the situation may be a drill, which in turn caused confusion among students. Proper training matters. We cannot afford complacency. Going around after an incident ensuring exterior doors all have a little gun free zone sticker on them doesn't constitute improving security or saving lives. As parents, we trust you with our children's safety. Right now, that trust is broken. It must be restored before it's too late.
One minute.
We must do better. I also want to address whether any student who facilitated, enabled, or had prior knowledge of this act of violence should remain in our learning environment. I firmly believe such actions warrant expulsion, and I urge the board to take decisive action to ensure administrators uphold the safety and integrity of our school and do the right thing. The safety of our students and staff must always be our highest priority. Schools are places of learning and community. When a student chooses to involve themselves, whether directly or indirectly, in enabling a dangerous individual to enter, they violate the fundamental trust that holds our school together. Their actions put everyone at risk. It's not just the person carrying the weapon who's responsible for potential tragedy. It's also those who aid, abet, or remain silent despite knowing the danger. If we fail to hold them accountable, we send a dangerous message that such actions are excusable. But we all know that in these situations, there are no second chances. One moment of negligence can cost lives. Expulsion is not about punishment. It's about protection. It ensures that students who prioritize safety, respect, and responsibility can continue to learn without fear. While there may be paths to rehabilitation outside of our school, those who jeopardize others' well-being have forfeited their place in this school. I urge this board to act decisively. We must make a firm stand against
Your time is up.
...of participation in school violence. We must uphold the principles of accountability and ensure the right to safety that each of our students have
Thank you.
...when entering our schools. Anything less is a failure of our
You can email the board. If you have more, if you have more to share, you're welcome to send the rest in an email.
Thank you for listening. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I would like to call Kayden Cordero to the front.
Hi, my name is Kayden, and I'm a junior at Oregon City High School. I'm here to talk to you about me and a hundred-plus other students' feelings about being unacknowledged and dismissed by our administrators. Just the other day, I was talking to one of our associate principals, and she dismissed my feelings of wanting to advocate myself, if I can put that any clearer than that. I've come to talk with many students, and we've bonded over shared experiences, sorry, of having our incident reports go unacknowledged. And I've personally seen my incidents reports be thrown away after they were handed to the person who is in charge of specifically no contact orders. Another specific experience that I've shared with other students is that our schedule preferences or 504 accommodations are not being met. I specifically have a 504, and I was talking to one of my counselors about putting something new onto my 504. And I emailed him, called him, my parent called him, and he never responded, never called me out of class to talk to me about my 504, and has not acknowledged me anytime I've walked past him. And he knows me. He knows who I am. Yes, they do listen to us, but when they put in the effort into listening to our needs, it feels very sloppy, and it feels very lazy, in the best way that I can put it. It feels like they don't really care at all for what we want and what we need. You know, as students, we go to our administrators and counselors with the needs that we feel are going to put us in the best place in an educational
One minute.
system. What I want you to take from this is that, you know, having these administrators and counselors and teachers treat us this way makes a lot of the students, including me, not want to go to school. I don't want to attend. I don't want to, I don't want to feel like I can't confide in my administrators and my teachers because they don't listen. And they have proven that to me and several other students. Just last year, actually, I was cornered into a bathroom, a bathroom stall by, like I'd say, like a group of five girls. And I had reported that. Nobody ever followed up. Nobody ever listened. Nobody called back or emailed me back or even brought that up to me this year. And I was almost put into a fight where pretty much I was almost jumped because of the way that I look. And I tried talking to administrators
Turn this up. Thank you.
and they didn't listen.
You also, if there's more you'd like to share, you're welcome to email the board the rest of your comments.
Okay.
We'd be happy to read them.
Thank you.
Please do.
Thank you.
That was your last patron input for the evening.
Thank you so much. So moving on to board communication, we have our student representative Coria F.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Coria Fedema. I'm from Oregon City High School Student Council, and I just wanted to share with you what some of our upcoming events are this month. So, starting off this week, we have our Respect Week run by our Unity Committee. This whole week is basically a way for our, like, school to just be more unified. So we have Spirit Days today. Ours was Popolene to Beds. We all wore, like, pajamas to school. It was really fun. And like, the lunchrooms, we have little bags of, like, the chocolate hugs and kisses that you can send to a friend's classroom. So that's really great. And we hand out little, like, plush hearts in the morning on Wednesdays. And yeah, so it's just a great way for our school to come together. And next week, actually, is our Wish Week. This is our second year doing it, partnered with the Make-A-Wish Oregon. It's, so, it's going to be a week-long fundraiser. Tuesday, the 18th, we're having a bingo night. It's open to the community, so please show up. It'll be from 7:00 to 8:00 at OCHS in the Commons. So invite all your friends. We're doing a couple of restaurant fundraisers, and we had the privilege of partnering with our cheer team to do a cheer clinic for elementary schoolers. And they'll be performing at the halftime show of one of our girls' basketball games on Friday, February 21st. It'll be at the 545 girls' basketball game. So that's been a great way for us to connect with younger age groups while still fundraising for Make-A-Wish. And we also have our City Hawkins Dance at the end of the week that'll also be going towards it. And then, one more thing, the week after Wish Week, we have our canned food drive. We do two of these every year. One of them goes out into our community, usually through Elks Lodge. And our second one, which is this one, stays within our school, so it goes to our Pioneer Pantry, which goes to students who maybe don't have access to food at home, so they can come in and take any food they need. Yeah. So if you guys have any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions from the board?
Thank you so much.
What restaurants are you doing fundraiser at?
We are partnering with Jersey Mike's on Wednesday next week, and we're trying to set up a mod pizza one. It's been a little last minute because we had a fallout with another fundraiser, so we're trying to set that up, yeah.
That sounds great. Thank you so much for sharing with us.
Thank you so much.
And next, we have Asha with OCEA.
Good evening, everyone. Well, let's see, I've got a lot on my agenda here. So the first thing is that we've got high school conferences coming up this week on Thursday evening, I believe. So I know our high school colleagues are looking forward to getting to meet with families and speak about the progress the students are making. And then also coming up this week, there's a Teacher Work Day on Friday for the rest of our members. And that means that it's a four-day weekend for students because we don't have President's Day. But we'll be spending Friday doing professional development in the morning and then teacher planning time in the second half of the day. As I know, teachers always value getting that time, especially this time of the year, kind of crunch time for a lot of people. And then, we did have our other Teacher Work Day in PD not that long ago at the end of January. I know a lot of school, you know, it's different depending on the school, what people focus on in their professional development. But I know a lot of schools have been focusing on behavior as one of the biggest things in a lot of their professional development recently. And I know at my school, we also focused on some standardized testing data and stuff, too, taking a look at data. This month, as we, you know, we already heard from the Black Student Union about Black History Month, but I know in a lot of classrooms, teachers are focusing on Black history this month and taking a minute to highlight some of the accomplishments of figures from our Black history in this country. And this week, we also are celebrating, I mean, we don't have school on Friday, but I know a lot of teachers, especially at the elementary level, are celebrating Valentine's Day in schools. And it's always a fun time, or, you know, Friendship Day, or whatever you want to call it. But it's always a fun time to get to have kind of a little celebration with students and do something positive where we all make nice things for each other and get to kind of relax. Well, the kids get to relax and have fun. Sometimes it can be a little stressful for teachers. But another thing is that I know that there have been some concerns from teachers about making sure that our schools remain a safe and welcoming place for each and every person and student that walks through our doors. And we're very appreciative of our secretaries for knowing how to respond in those difficult situations, receiving some guidance from the district. But I know that that's been an area of concern for some teachers specifically. And then, last of all, we know Classified Appreciation is coming up and, you know, in March, and we just want to say how much we appreciate our classified staff. I know that teachers and other certified staff would really not be able to do our jobs at all without our classified colleagues. They really make the school run. So, we appreciate you. That's it. Thank you.
And up next, Debbie with the OSEA.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. For those of you that have expressed how much classified staff mean to you. They work hard. They're hard workers. I don't have a lot on my agenda. This is a slower season for us as we get ready to go into bargaining. A lot of our stuff kind of gears up more in the spring. We have more things happening for, as far as our union and our union board activities. We've been busy supporting several staff members with concerns and issues that have been coming up in schools. And, you know, they get really nervous when someone says, hey, can you come in for a chat? And I get emails, I don't know what to do. It's like, say yes, and let me know when you need someone to be there with you. So we're just trying to be supportive and help them relax a little, because in some schools, there's a lot going on. And so they get really nervous. But we're trying to be supportive in that way and have representation there with them and just encourage them and advise them, you know, what to do next. We have had a few meetings now with our bargaining team, so that is in motion. And we'll be starting with, meeting with the district in March, so that's exciting. And I think that's about all I have.
Thank you. Fantastic. Thank you so much, Debbie. Moving on to reports and discussion, our first report is our enrollment report, Dr. Spitzer.
Excellent. I'm just giving the board an update and our community an update on our enrollment at this time, as of January. So by the, by the totals, we'll start off with elementary. So I put in, we always have a few more at the beginning of the year, and then families move mid-year. So usually, we see a drop. But right now, as you see, Beaver Creek, we're pretty much flat. Same thing with Candy Lane. We're overall down Candy Lane, about 10. Gaffney, also pretty much on the money. Holcomb also is kind of leveled out a little bit. John McLaughlin, mostly that's due to smaller Kinder in First numbers. Our birth rates are lower, and for some reason, McLaughlin neighborhood, little friends, not as many of them. And then Redland, also flat. So we're at 2,903 as of the 28th, which looks pretty flat. I will remind us, our board, that our 10-year projection also looks pretty flat. Even though birth rates are lower, because of some of the development that we see, we're expected to be consistent. Gardner and Tamwata, for the next slide, have also seen, both have seen a little bit of growth since last year. Tamwata more so than Gardner. Oregon City High School, about the same. Case, we saw a decrease at the end of the year. That's kind of continued this year, but has stabilized. Oxla, seen a little bit of growth. We see growth over time there. And then Jackson Prep, our tinnerit teaching, for a total of 3,880. So if you look at the grand total, we're at 6,783. This time last year, we're about 60 kids more. And at the beginning of there, we've actually seen some growth. I also wanted to share real quickly some Kinder, some class sizes. So, you know, last year, we staffed, and the year before, we staffed our schools at 28.5 to 1. So basically, we take the number of students, we divide by 28.5 to 1, and then we kind of look at pockets of what we would affectionately call hotspots, where kids don't come in packages of 28. And so sometimes they, we need to add a little FTE. That's where our class size reduction, mostly from our SIA funds, come in. Principals have really prioritized having smaller classes at K-1, 2. There's some data from the Tennessee Star Report from back in the 90s that talks about, especially in high-impacted communities, having smaller classes in those grades had impacted reading scores. We're actually doing another deep dive on the research, just to be most current. We'll be sharing that with you in the future. So in kindergarten, basically, all of our kids are in class sizes of under 25. In first grade, they're all under a ratio of 28.5 to 1. And then second grade is a little bit more in the middle. For third, fourth, and fifth, you see class sizes a little bit bigger. I went back and looked at fourth grade in the beginning of the year, because I was like, wow, there's some, there's eight of them that are 29 or more. I think there's one class of 32 and two classes of 31. They didn't start out that way. Sometimes we laugh as principals where we'll say, please, the next person that comes in, don't be a fourth grader. I think they've all come, moved in, have been fourth graders. So they're just a little bit bigger in the class sizes. So that's our current rate. And I would say, I'm really thankful and pleased that we have maintained our enrollment here in Oregon City. There's a lot of surrounding districts have had quite a loss of students and families in their community. And across the state, we've had almost a decrease of 30,000 since COVID in Oregon. So I'm glad that we have remained stable and keep our schools open and running.
Is there any information about, like, incoming kinders? I know that the enrollment's starting soon, but just as far as siblings or preschools, that we communicate with?
Yeah, at this, at this moment, we don't really know. I mean, we haven't heard any different from our daycare providers, as well as, well, we asked Michelle, as well as our early childhood programs. It looks like it's pretty much the same. So we're hoping that the longitudinal projections from flow analytics is accurate, and we'll get the same number of kinders. But yes, if you have a Kinder, registration starts, I believe, next week.
I have five.
Oh.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you so much. Up next is our attendance report with Kate Bonia. Thank you so much for sticking with us.
Of course. My pleasure. Good to see everybody. If you don't know me, I am Kate Bonia. I'm the Associate Director of Behavioral Health. I just wanted to give a little update on attendance. So I'm going to walk through these slides. As you know, attendance is something that I love to talk about. I'll try to keep within my timeframe, though. So this is connected to Strategic Plan Priority 3. Our attendance, we are trying to drive our attendance up by five percentage points. And this really speaks to our overall priority of robust systems for our well-being and belonging. So just to sort of ground down on what research tells us, tells us, as well as what our data is telling us, strong attendance is really driven by a sense of belonging. And that really comes down to transparent and strong communication, as well as strong relationships. That combined with engaging instruction. So that means our students experience meaningful instruction at grade-level standards. We will see stronger attendance from those students. Interestingly enough, of course, with the fancy animated slide, you'll see, too, that once a student is attending regularly, they're going to experience more feelings of belonging and engaging instruction. So this slide, it's a little bit off-kilter here. I'm sorry. I needed to format it better. But I just wanted to let you know that in our student management system, we have an early warning system. It's divided into three different colors. There's a red zone, a yellow zone, and a green zone. And that enables all of our schools to be able to easily see students who are considered to be regular attenders. So that means they're at school 90% or more of the time, missing less than 10%. Yellow Yellow zone means things are getting a little iffy, right? We're getting concerned about the days that they're missing. And then red means that we really need to support those students and make sure that we're removing obstacles to attendance. Our attendance committee, which meets monthly and is comprised of administrators as well as other staff, have really found that there are different approaches for those different zones. So when we are working to move a student from the yellow zone to the green zone, that's where we're making, really trying to touch base with those families, clear communication around attendance expectations. We also really want to catch them early. So earlier intervention has been found to drive greater attendance numbers. And then also celebrations and recognition of strong attendance at schools, at school. That really impacts that group. Whereas getting our students from the red zone to the yellow zone, that's where we're going to start doing more things like porch visits. We're going to do really personalized approaches. That is a lot of what the Families in Transition Team, which is our social workers and our McKinney-Vento liaisons, the team that I support, that's something that we've really focused on. So we are really excited to do community events. We actually have one that's happening at Kingsbury Heights tomorrow that we're really excited about. And we've done a fair amount at Las Flores. In fact, we're going to start tabling there every other week so that we can just meet families where they're at, build strong relationships, and make sure that we're removing those barriers to attendance. So let's see where we're at. I'm excited to tell you that all of our attendance rates, so this is a snapshot in time, February 4th last year in comparison to February 4th this year. All of our schools have either stayed the same or their attendance has gotten even stronger. The one school that has experienced a little bit of a dip is Redland. That's something that we're aware of. I think it has to do with various contributing factors. And it's something that we'll be working on as the year continues. Our secondary is also looking quite strong. I do want to draw your attention to Oxla, which has had a huge jump. So if we go to the next slide. Oxla has had the highest gain in attendance with a four percentage rate gain. Sarah Craig wanted to be here so that she could just celebrate that with you. We're really excited to see this. It means that more of our students are attending school and engaging. So again, 10 out of our 11 schools, we're looking good. We've got a plan around our one. We think that has to do with some changing landscape around staffing and things like that. So we'll be focusing on that as we move forward. Some of the things that we've identified that we want to continue to do. We are going to be changing our early warning system per our attendance committee so that our yellow zone students, actually, we catch them sooner. We've decided that that earlier intervention is just so key to driving strong attendance rates. We're also going to be expanding our community programming and presence. So again, like I mentioned, Las Flores has been more of a pilot program for us. And we're moving out into the communities so that we are present and building relationships with families who experience barriers to attendance. And then finally, we've also looked into making sure that our teachers have the facts that they need around attendance. I know that I'd be preaching to the choir here, but teachers have such a huge impact on our student experience. And so if they're really stressing attendance in classrooms, that's something we've seen to really drive for strong rates. We're also anticipating a slump time. So any collaborative and fun ideas you want to pass on to us? Post-spring break is a huge slump for attendance. So we're going to want to get innovative. Some highlights. I just wanted to make sure that you saw this. Accessible and consistent messaging from schools. So this is from the Holcomb site. We do find that there is still confusion about when students should stay home. And so making sure that this, if you go to the Holcomb site, it's right there and parents can double-check. And then this is also taken from Gardner. If you walk into the lobby, you will see this, which is super cool, celebrating students who have missed zero days. And all students can see their names and they're celebrated. These are our wonderful social workers, Christina Ermini and Lauren Engelfried. I will call your attention to the amazing balloon arch. This was a community event that we did, and Lauren made that balloon arch herself. So it was really fun. Any questions?
I have a question. We just heard from a patron, a student, and I'm sure you're just like screaming like, what, how would we catch?
Oh, you bet.
How would we catch that student? Where, what zone would they fall in? And she said she didn't want to attend school. Obviously, I don't know her attendance. But how do we support that student? What steps would you, if that student came to you, what would, what would it look like? And how would you mitigate that to make her want to attend school?
Yeah, I really, I was actually having the same thought, like this parallel, right? I don't know her attendance rate. So I can't say like which zone she would fall under. However, and I was also hearing a strong feeling of lack of belonging at school, right? And so to me, that comes down to that personalized communication and removal of barriers. So honestly, I would start with building relationships. And so that's where things come into play, like porch visits, if our family is comfortable with it, or just being present in the community. Because obviously, we can't build that relationship and have that personalized conversation if they're not at school, right? So that's where our social workers come into play in a really powerful way.
What do you do in regards to students that actually show up to school but don't attend class? And then just run the halls?
Yeah.
Because that's a massive problem right now.
I agree. I wish Sarah Craig was here. I think that that was something that she was really experiencing at Oxla. And I think that's where we get to that engaging instruction part, right? If our instruction is engaging and students are able to access the material, they're going to want to show up to class. And Oxla has been a really great example of that. It's a challenge, though, for sure.
When you talk about the warning system, is there actually like a tag in the, in their student information system that it talks about, like they have a plan? Or is that, does it trigger something when their attendance meets a certain threshold? I'm just kind of curious on how the communication with staff goes around additional supports.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So in our student management system, you go to a page and it gives you this really accessible dashboard of yellow, green, or red. And so you can pull up a list of students who might be in your yellow zone or your red zone. Our attendance teams at sites, they're the ones who are going to be looking at that regularly, right? And then they'll also partner with teachers, especially at the elementary level, to pass on our, you know, red zone list or our yellow zone list. Does that answer your question, Dr. Blackwell?
Yeah, I was just curious overall and kind of where that information was housed and then who's accessing it and utilizing it so that the right people have the right information to make things happen.
Totally. Yep.
So back in September, my son is a fourth grader. He got sick. And so he was out for like a week. And now we're getting his tonsils out at the end of February. He's going to be really excited. I'm talking about this in a public meeting.
Get popsicles.
But so that might set off an alarm, right? Because he's now missed a week then. He's probably going to miss now, a week now. Is there, is there a delineation between those kind of absences and unexcused absences, that sort of thing?
Yeah, so when it comes to the overall attendance rate, no. The state counts excused and unexcused. Really, because when we think about it, it's missed instructional time, right? That said, obviously, communication with the school is really important, but also a great question and one that we actually need to clarify a lot, which is like certainly, we want parents to be calling in when there's a sickness happening. And that number is still calculated into an overall attendance rate.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Moving on to budget update with Jason.
Tonight, I want to share with you an update regarding our budget. As we look at our revenue and expenditures as budgeted, we're generally on track as of the end of January with the following to be considered. We are currently estimating a reduction of $710,000 in revenue, most of which, half a million dollars of which is coming from our local property taxes. It's really difficult to predict when people will pay their property taxes. And I do use 10 years of data and a collection rate based on that when we produce the budget. But even still, I just want you to know, budgets are based on the best information I have at a given point in time. The most current estimate of, from ODE calculating our ADMW is 24 below the adopted budget. The ADMW coupled with an estimate of a $350,000 reduction in revenue from the transportation grant in the 2024, '25 school year. I also want to share with you that normally, we receive an updated per-student fiscal allocation, our ADMW, at the end of period one each year. And we have yet to receive that information from ODE for the '24, '25 school year. We are anticipating that our revenue will remain the same as budgeted or possibly a slight increase as a result of a slight increase in the per-student allocation from the state. You heard Dr. Spitzer refer to that earlier. The state is 30,000 less. And if we do maintain a flat enrollment rate, that will produce a slight increase because the per-student dollar amount will go up. But we don't have that information as of yet. Our final audited 23, '24 ending fund balance was $10.94 million. This is $630,000 over the $10.3 million we projected in our adopted budget, resulting in a slight increase in revenue, offsetting the majority of the reductions from the budget to actual estimates that I just stated. And I gave you line by line in the board docs. Our budgeted ending fund balance for the '24, '25 school year is 5.53 million, or 5%, plus the $1.7 million in contingencies totaling 6.5%. For each month, we become more and more clear about our revenue and our expenses and expected end-of-the-year balance. At this time, we are projecting our revenue and our expenses to be solid with a slight increase to our projected ending fund balance. As you recall, in October, we discussed PERS. July 1st, 2025, Oregon City School District, the, there was an announcement made for us. The Oregon Public Retirement System rates will increase for us 6.09% for our Tier 1 and Tier 2 employees and 5.75% for our OPSEC employees. This will result in an estimated $3.5 million increase in associated payroll costs for the '25, '26 school year. These rate increases are the result of an annual payroll growth that exceeded the actuarial assumptions made by PERS in 2024, which was a 3.4% increase. And that coupled with PERS retirees living longer were making more payments over time. The funding increases will be different for each district. And each district requires its own complex assessment on a per-district basis. Because districts have averaged more payroll growths than the actuary assumption of the 3.4%, the 2004 PERS unfunded actuary liability side accounts have been used up quicker than anticipated in most districts. Also, today, I am in Salem at the WASBO Conference, the Oregon Association of School Business Officials. And I'm learning that there are several bills ahead of us that will have potential financial impacts for us. And we will be made aware of them as the legislature continues.
Any questions from the board? Thank you so much, Jason. Up next is our bond update from David Haps.
Good evening. Glad to report I've made it a full month here at the district. So I'm happy to be back. Things are going very well with bond. I've really been focused in this last month on getting it up to speed with the assistance of the team that's here with the district as well as our partners. We have some exciting, I think, updates to share with you. We are bringing onboard a new program manager, project management firm. That contract will come forward to the board next month. This is OTAC. They were also on the 2018 bond, although it is a completely different staffed team for this go-around. We had three firms that proposed as part of an RFP and a response. And after our selection committee went through the process and interviews, we chose OTAC. They have collectively a lot of experience in bond programs across the metro area as well as Salem and Central Oregon. So we bring, I think, a lot of depth to what we have to do on our bond going forward. We are using the time this week to really focus on our first phase of projects, which is looking at the fields at Oregon City High School and at Pioneer Stadium and improvements on those two facilities. We are touring both of those on Wednesday with our consultant partners, our architects and engineers, to look at refinement of scope and really our next steps to go into design and then looking at bidding on both of those projects or both of those series of projects as we move forward. Our athletic director is getting engaged with us as well to share her knowledge and experience on those facilities. We have a lot of really good information to take forward and start refining that scope. We anticipate we will likely get some of that work started this year. It might be into the fall for baseball and softball fields in particular. But that's really going to be the focus initially, is going to be on the replacement of the grass fields with turf as we're moving forward and again, meeting our bond commitments that we've made to the community. We are also using Friday, which our colleagues have noted is a non-student contact day. We are going to be out in the schools with our, again, architect and engineer partners, really focused on Cohort 2 schools, really walking through, getting the team familiar with those schools, looking at the issues and the commitments that we've made and really starting to refine our concepts around design. We have not started designing those yet, but this is really our initial walkthrough with our consultant partners to start that process and be ready for summer of '26 to start work on those schools. I think that's the principal updates right at the moment. We're really getting started on, on design and really starting to drive things forward. I'm trying to make sure that we've got a good handle on our scope for each of these projects. And then we'll be proceeding forward with bidding on, on this work or using cooperative agreements to buy under those agreements, things such as turf, as an example, will likely come out of a cooperative agreement that is in place. Are there any questions?
Yeah, actually, I do. We partner with a lot of youth programs in the area. And I'm wondering, how is it going to affect the youth programs using the fields during the summers if you are going to be digging in and redoing them?
That, that's a great question. We've already drawn on, and I apologize on the name, Suez, I believe, at the high school, who does a lot of the coordination with youth sports and access to those. We're already tying in to let her know what anticipated schedules are. Today, we don't have an anticipated schedule yet for that work. But she's already been engaged with me on specific events that are happening in June, for example, that will not be impacted. There's a large event just after graduation. The other youth football or youth programs that may be happening at the field, there may be disruptions at some point during the, the process of construction or reconstruction of the fields. And we'll look at what alternatives we can come up with for the community. But I can't tell you today that there won't be an impact. There will be to some extent as we go through and redo these fields. The good thing about baseball and softball is, again, I should clarify, I'm not a baseball or softball person. But it will happen, the work will happen late summer or fall. or softball person, but it will happen, the work will happen late summer or fall. Most of those sports are occurring in the spring, at least at the high school level, so we shouldn't have an impact on those fields. The football field in the center of the track may have some impacts to programs that are happening up in that area, but we'll have to address that as we move forward and get closer on our design and really refine our schedule.
So will you be offering alternatives for those programs, or is it something that we're just going to have to schedule around? I mean, I guess, I guess, are we going to look at partnering with other, like, maybe Clackamas Community College, since we do partner with them right now, maybe being able to rent their fields or something like that? I guess that's the question that I'm looking at, because I don't know if you know, but my husband is actually the president of Oregon City Youth Football, and so it does affect 300-plus kids in our community in regards to that. We've had probably one of the biggest turnouts last year for football, and so I think that we're probably on the track to continue it. So I just want to make sure that the youth kids that are part of Oregon City School District are able to use the facilities, continue to use the facilities, and so the season isn't interrupted for them.
Sure, absolutely. And I think we're going to partner with Suez, who I think does the coordination on the use of those fields as we go forward, and we'll look for those alternatives and see what we can come up with for partnerships. That's an excellent point made.
Okay.
As you begin kind of touring the schools and working with architects and doing design work, how are you going to ensure that staff are feeling like their inputs are being heard as it comes to rebuilding, especially the elementary schools? When, I know in the last bond, there was some real questions about whether staff are really feeling heard and how kind of the outcomes came from that, and we want to make sure that everybody, we're building the schools that are going to make sense for our kids and not just something that looks good.
Right. Great, great question. We are about to start a process associated with our schools and kind of designing an edspec. Those edspecs will start as a high-level district leadership overview of what we're trying to do as it relates to our curriculum, et cetera, and then we'll be bringing those down to the individual school sites and drawing community members, students, and staff back into those conversations and those design meetings to really focus on the individual schools and make sure that there's a voice at the table being heard. We will be constant communication around what we're doing and how we're proceeding forward with that scope, so that, again, we want to make sure, because I've heard that loud and clear, the same feedback, that perhaps that wasn't as prevalent in the last bond, we want to make sure we're as transparent as we can be about what the scope is and that we want the input coming from staff as well as community members and certainly from students as well.
And then we'll be included too, so we can make sure that that's happening.
I apologize. Could you say it one more time?
I said, and we'll just make sure that we're all included on that as well, so we can make sure that's happening.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so, impact to learning in regards to redoing the school is what, I mean, obviously, you don't know that yet, you're still in the planning phases, but ideally, what are we looking at when it comes to impact of the kids in the buildings?
Well, several of the school sites will definitely have some significant impacts. We are going to be, in all likelihood, expanding square footage in some of the school sites. We will likely be relocating some students from certain schools to other locations potentially during construction. But you're right, we don't have that plan yet. We're not there. We will be very thoughtful around that, trying to minimize disruption, obviously, to students, but we also have to get the work done. And so, we will, again, not just the students and the families, but certainly the staff, and really working very diligently to get that out to them as quickly as we can, so they understand what the schedule is, and then provide the resources for them to assist in any relocation that has to happen, for teachers and classrooms, et cetera. But a lot of work still to do on that, but that will be forthcoming in the next probably six to eight months. We'll have a better handle on what that looks like.
Okay.
Anything from you, Coach?
Just, you know, I had a patron or parent say, just say, "Oh, my kid's going to get air conditioning," you know, and I go, "Well, you know, not this summer, because there's a design phase, there's an engineering phase, there's, are we going to, an obligation to our taxpayers to what we said we're going to do, we're going to do it." So you said construction will start in '26. I heard you on those elementary schools. And I know we're not going to do all six at the same time, and I think, how do we explain that to our public and our parents and our students, that this is a process and it's going to take time? And Oregon City School District wasn't built in one summer.
Right. That's a great point. It was not. You're correct. It was built over quite some time, and it's going to take us a while here to do that as well. We're just putting together one of the first major communications out to the community that's going out in the next day or so around the order of the schools that we're going to go through for our second phase and our third phase of schools, so that the community will understand where we are in our process and what that's going to look like. We will have updates to our schedules. The schedules that are currently published on the webpage were the kind of pre-bond schedules, and we've already shifted slightly off of those schedules just from where we are today, right? As we go through our planning process and get more refinement, we'll have better refinement on the schedules for the buildings and the schedule for construction. That is going to come out in weekly updates through our Communications Department and partnering with Caitlin on getting that pushed out to the community, so that they are very much informed on exactly both where we are and what the schedule looks like for their individual schools. They understand when the impacts are going to be there and kind of what the order is. The communication strategy, which we still have work to do on, associated with issues such as, what about this summer? It's, or this spring, it's going to still be hot. We're going to have to work through what that looks like in part of our communications plans and partnering with Caitlin to try to figure out how best to get that out to help the community understand that it is a process. We do have to just go through a series of stages to get there. We can't just jump forward and do it. It would be great if we could, but we want to make sure that we're doing it right. That certainly is the case, but doing it right involves not just design and engineering, but also obviously going through the city for permits and doing everything, meeting all of our codes, et cetera. So there's a real process, and we'll work on laying that out in our communication strategy as simply as we can, so that the community understands it, and we will still get questions about it, right? There's no doubt about that, but we'll be prepared to respond and answer to those questions as they come up.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you so much, David. Really appreciate the update. Moving on, for superintendent goals update, Dr. Spitzer.
Excellent. Tonight, I'm just reporting out on my three goals. So as superintendent, I supervise and ensure that we're meeting our district strategic plan goals, but usually, there's a couple of goals specifically that the board usually recommend, and then the board approves that take additional focus or attention. And so, for this year, goal one, I just sort of added, I'm trying to new lay out so that you can see it longitudinally, but goal one is really about community engagement and communication specifically related to the bond and just making sure that we are using multiple modalities for communicating information out to our stakeholders and our staff. So since my last report in November, we passed our bond, woo-hoo, and did a little celebration and then quickly switched over to legislative advocacy and attending all those legislative sessions, working with the board around your legislative one-pager. In December, I attempted my first podcast. We're seeing how that is, but to try to get information out about the budget bond and legislation with staff. We also hired David, and I would also like to share that I am not shocked, but the steps post-passing a bond have been pretty big, kind of surprising. I've learned a lot of things, like the term arbitrage opportunities, and read a lot of things about fiscal services. We've had some great support from Piper Sandler, who's helped us. We did our bond rating presentation, and I'm proud to say publicly that we went from an S&amp;P rating of an A+ to an AA+, which gives us a better bond rate, and that's due in part to your great leadership around stabilizing a higher ending fund balance and just stabilizing our system, so we're excited about that. We are working in January on doing listening sessions out in all of our schools to hear from our staff about our bond accreditation process, anything that they're interested in talking to us about. And we also have established our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and we're seeking additional opportunities for people to be involved in the bond. So start our bond webpage. We're just moving forward, and it's kind of moving the flywheel. There's nothing pretty to look at yet, but lots of excitement ahead. Goal two is really around focusing on quality instruction, and I would say I spend about a quarter of my time just supporting our team, supporting teaching and learning, working with principals, doing walkthroughs, et cetera. The big lift this year has been the five dimensions of teaching and learning and changing our new evaluation system. So we have been working with teachers and principals and our class design team just to talk about how that's going and making sure people are feeling great about that transition. There's just been a huge lift with our teaching and learning team, and I'm very thankful for Dr. Crane's leadership in that arena, looking more at data, implementing our new math curriculum, deep dive in ELA. We've used UFLI sessions for K2 literacy, so there's lots of work being done there. I've had the opportunity to do more instructional walkthroughs with principals this middle quarter, which has been great, and we have additional things that we're doing related to starting our adoption for health and science curriculum this year as well. And then my last goal is around the Cognia accreditation and reflection. So our high schools have to be accredited in order to give out diplomas. You have to be in accredited high school, but we have chosen to do a K-12 process, mostly because I believe that it's important to get an outside lens on our system. We grow more when we have different people looking at us, which is great. So we kind of kicked that off into the summer, and October, they did an analysis, and by November, they said, "We're good to go." So at this point, it's a lot of information gathering, and we've been able to align that with our integrated grants process, our strategic plan and Cognia, so we are able to kind of do one survey for one thing instead of five surveys. So that's been great, and as we continue to look at that data, then we'll crunch that, share that back with Cognia, and hopefully, we'll have some good feedback from Cognia by the end of the year to share with the board about what they see as our strengths and areas of potential growth in our K-12 system.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the update.
So moving on to policy first reads with Dr. Crane and Lisa.
So we have, it's a pretty easy first-read situation tonight, but if you go to the next slide, I just want to remind us that the purpose of doing this is the school board policies are statements which set forth a purpose and prescribe, in general terms, the organization and program of a school system, and that's from the National School Board Association. So policy falls under categories of legal compliance, staff direction and guidance to communicate to different contingencies and to, you know, community numbers, I think I made it that word, or to make a statement and show support. So just a reminder there. And then we know that, well, neither we know, House Bill 4160 changed the definition of a student, and so that is what Lisa's going to talk about with the two policies that are impacted by that.
We do. Both policy, the first one is JHFFGBNAA, and then the second one is the reverse of that. So one is student-facing and one is staff-facing, and it changes the requirement from a 90-day graduate counts as a student to a year counts as a student in the system. These are both reporting requirements for suspected sexual conduct with students, which, as you can see, elongates the time that a student needs to be out of school in order to be not considered a student. That's those two policies. And then the third one that you have is the GCAA, and this is Standards for Competent and Ethical Performance of Oregon Educators. It changes the language at the beginning of the policy to reflect TSPC's new current plan for investigations and a little bit of their timeline in that, which is, matches with what they are currently doing. And this one, this policy is optional. The other two policies are required.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Moving on, we have, I'll just give a quick update on the superintendent's evaluation timeline, just so the board and the community's aware. This week, the superintendent evaluation details and evaluation rating form will be posted for the board to access. February 20th will be our deadline for board members to complete the evaluation questionnaire input for Holly to be able to...
You also did that?
The 20th.
February?
Yes. So Holly can prepare all the materials for our discussion together. Then on the 24th, we'll have our executive session to complete the evaluation. And then prior to March 10th, the board will meet with our superintendent, and then March 10th, I will present the evaluation summary at our board meeting. Are there any questions or concerns about that timeline?
What session, any discussion, when are we?
The 24th.
When are we?
Yes. Do you have travel concerns, Deb?
Oh, yeah. You go? Yeah. When do we get the...
It's coming out this week.
Okay. When did you say that?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
Could you just tell me that? I totally didn't hear it.
I said this week, but I didn't say tomorrow morning. Do we need to coordinate, Michelle, to talk about?
Actually, yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. If there's any other questions about that, we can connect offline just to coordinate schedules and all of that business. Moving on to the Budget Committee, we don't yet have any applicants, so we've extended the deadline. Holly, when did we extend it? To the 20th. To the very end of the month. So board support in reminding prospective applicants to turn in their application would be really helpful.
I'm working on a few.
Thank you. And again, we can chat offline if we want to work together to reach out to community members. Okay, so moving on, we have, does that, no, okay. Clackamas Education Service District report with Larry Didway. Thank you so much for being so flexible with us.
Well, good evening. It's great to see you all here tonight. Chair Wilson and Vice Chair Conchola, board members, Dr. Spitzer. I think you're being handed the packet that we're going to be referring to here, but before we get started and talking about that, again, my name's Larry Didway, Superintendent for Clackamas Education Service District, and I've spent a few hours with the Oregon City School Board in my lifetime. Behind me are some special guests with me, beginning with our board chair, Linda Brown, and a board member, Wade Byers, and also probably a familiar face to many of you, board member Susan Trone, who was a former Oregon City School District employee. And tonight is our annual visit with you to share with you our 25-26 local service plan. But before I go into that, I want to offer a few thank yous to a few of you first, beginning with your superintendent, Dale Spitzer, who is a valued member of our regional superintendents group that meets monthly and regularly beyond that, to share information and collaborate on challenges. And in particular, Dr. Spitzer was a very helpful part of our planning for this year's successful Legislative Breakfast that was held in collaboration with Clackamas Community College. I also, in one of your documents, the actual local service plan, which looks like this in your packet, on pages 10 and 11, there are a number of other Oregon City School District professionals who were called out on there, who regularly meet with our regional colleagues and advisory groups that are facilitated by Clackamas ESD, and we very much appreciate their commitment to that collaborative work with peers all across the county. And we also want to say thank you to the Oregon City School District teams who allowed teachers from other districts to visit their classrooms to look at how building thinking classroom strategies are delivered. That was very much appreciated as well. Also, would be remiss not to say thank you to you, board members, for your service. Last month was School Board Recognition Month, so we're a little late on that, but we'll call it a Valentine, and just say thank you for your service and dedication. We know it's a labor of love, and we know it requires a great deal of your personal time and commitment, and our whole community appreciates what you bring and the advocacy that you do for all of public education, not just in January, but all year long. And we did bring a token of our appreciation, a packet of note cards that feature art from our last art regional show at Clackamas ESD. I also want to extend an invitation to any of your board members to serve on our Clackamas ESD Budget Committee that meets in May every year to review and approve our annual budget. And we do have board members from several other school districts who are represented on this committee. We would very much welcome someone from Oregon City. And if you're interested in that, if you would let Dr. Spitzer know, and she will put you in touch with us. So a few notes about our local service plan that I held up earlier. This is the one document that you're being asked to approve. All the rest of the information in that packet is just information. But this is a plan that is developed annually. It covers all of the services that the ESD will provide to local school districts in the coming fiscal year. It, district advisory groups begin planning, putting, providing input on that plan development. That plan is developed and reviewed by our superintendents and deliberated on. And then it goes to our ESD board before it comes to our component school districts for board approval as well. This one in particular reflects a very productive partnership between Clackamas ESD and all 10 of the school districts that we serve. It's a comprehensive review of our services, beginning with resolution services, which are those that are available to all school districts and paid for by all school districts. Those include areas, some areas in special education, technology, data, and teaching and learning support, as well as direct revenue that can be applied to ESD services of your choice. And then we also cover our contract and grant services that are paid for by multiple state and federal sources or by districts that actually request them. And those are in the areas of early learning, student support services, many other special education services, technology and teaching and learning services. And again, this local service plan has been approved by our Clackamas Chief Administrators Council, which is all 10 of our school superintendents and also the president of Clackamas Community College. And it's also been approved by the Clackamas ESD Board of Directors, and it's here for your review and approval tonight. But there are a few other documents that I want to call attention to, beginning with your annual fiscal report, which looks like this. And that is a detailed report for your district that indicates the overall value of the services from Clackamas ESD over the 23-24 school year. And it highlights some of the key services that we made available. Your print packet does include reports for all other school districts as well, for your information. And a few Oregon City highlights are that there was nearly $7.5 million of value of total services that were provided. That's about $300,000 more than the previous year. And about $1.5 million in revenue was funneled directly to you. And that was about $100,000 more than the previous year. It does reflect vibrant partnerships in improving support for multilingual learners, providing early learning evaluation and support services, providing special education services to students with very complex needs, supporting school nurses and counselors, helping address students' mental and behavioral health needs, and providing a whole range of data and technology support, and supporting improvements and enhancements to curriculum and instruction in areas such as literacy, math, STEM, and CTE. And we hope that the format of that report helps give you some more context about the many ways that Oregon City School District and Clackamas ESD partner with one another. But we would very much welcome your feedback on how we can make that report even more useful to you in the future. And then we also included a copy of our annual report. It looks like this. It's called All In. And that's representing the year prior as well. And it's really just a, uses data and storytelling to provide more information and context about how Clackamas ESD intersects with our community and what kind of impact we have on our region. And we hope that that report is also useful to you, and we would welcome your feedback on either the format of that or if there are some specific things you would like to see featured in future reports. And then last but not least, I slipped in a copy of this, the snapshot K-12 Public Schools in Clackamas County. And this is a document that we developed for the December Legislative Breakfast that was held here on this campus with all 10 of our school districts and the college. And on the back of it, it does include the 2025 legislative priorities. And that reflects collective work from all 10 of our school superintendents on legislative priorities reflected and in need and receiving support for this region. And I know that many of you are actively advocating and have got, and we wanted to make sure you had one of those in case you missed it and to know that those are available. And if you would like more copies of that for your use, let Dr. Spitzer know, and we will make sure we get those to you. And with that, I'll pause to see if you have any questions.
Questions from the board?
Just more of a wondering around, I mean, obviously, the plan's done in collaboration with representatives. But are there some new services or some services that are meaningably more robust? Just curious overall in what's provided. Where, what's the direction of the services needed from the ESD?
Yeah. I would say that the areas are very much the same, but each of those tweaks with current needs. So for example, we are leaning very heavily into providing some leadership and guidance around the use of artificial intelligence and AI. And we're doing that in a number of areas, both in operationally, curriculum, instruction, and, and policy guidance. And so we're, we're engaged in a number of things like that. We've also are pivoting and providing a deeper look into literacy and early literacy as a state goal. And our superintendents collectively wanted to increase our presence and our influence in Salem. And so we are about to engage in working with some external partners to help structure that advocacy. Those are a few examples. Yep.
When you say external partners, do you mean like lobbying firms?
Yes. I was trying not to use that.
I know, but.
But yes.
It's good.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for all the information and taking the time to put this together for us.
Thank you. Yep. Partnership is very much valued. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay. So moving on, we are to our consent agenda. For community members that might not be aware, these are regular recurring items the board is aware of in advance, and we approve them all together. Is there? Here it goes.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Oh, there we have it. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board? Sorry, I was trying to get this to work. It's working. Director Hayes?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Cancola?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our action items, our first action item of the evening is approve a contract with amendment, contract amendment with brick architecture for post-bond construction work.
I'll motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Are there questions around this?
Just as we've got some of the information last night, or I was looking at some of the information last night, there's a lot of pages in some of that. As we vote to approve this, what are we getting for our money? Because it's a large sum of money, and the public might not know what comes with the consulting in a project of this magnitude. So if you can maybe bring some light to that. And some of the board members might have some questions too about that. And then is this also on top of that, is this a standard? Because when you go through the contract, it looks like it's a, it's kind of industry standard. And if I'm misspeaking, you can correct me on that, the fee schedule.
Sure. Well, if I can just give you the little bit of background. So just as a reminder to the board, the contract with BRIC was signed in, I think, June of 2023, following an RFP where we had seven or eight architects, I believe it was before my time, but seven or eight architects that submitted. And we chose BRIC as our kind of district architect. They helped us through the planning phases of the bond program. And the intention with that RFP was to utilize their services for the bond, which is where we are today. So this First Amendment at a little bit over $13 million, I should point out that that's a not to exceed amount. That means that they are not guaranteed that amount. They will be paid for the services that they provide. They will be providing us with individual proposals underneath that $13 million for the individual projects. They came up with the $13 million based on some standards that were put into place in the 2018 bond, which was looking at fees that ranged from 10% to 12% new construction versus renovations, which are very much in alignment with industry standards. The larger the project, generally the smaller percentage of the fee there is on these smaller renovations, which is kind of what our groups of maintenance projects are. Those fees are really in alignment in general terms with the industry standard, but we're not just giving them a flat rate. They're going to have to give us a proposal, and we will evaluate that and make refinements to that as we go on each individual project. What we are buying and getting with those services is all of our architecture, engineering designs for all of our schools and our fields. So this includes subconsultants such as mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers. It includes low voltage. It includes civil engineering work, for example, on the fields. And then all of the architecture, the basic drawing of our designs. They will get, they go through a variety of phases in design that they will, they will draw, schematic design, design development, and then construction documents to get us to our final set of drawings that we can actually bid out to the community and, and with our contractors to help hire them to, to actually build the school. And then the architects also included within that fee, they will participate in construction administration, which basically they're helping the district and our other partners to monitor the progress of construction, making sure that what the contractor is building is actually what they designed and making sure that it meets those standards. So hopefully that helps and answers your questions?
It does. Okay. I think the public needed to hear that because it's, it's, it's a not to exceed. It's a lot of money there, but somebody might not be in the business that I'm in and you're in and know those. So it's good to be transparent where we're spending our money.
Just as an FYI, in paragraph one, in case we want to redo this document, autocorrect looks like it added a K to BRIC in the first paragraph. So it says BRIC architecture, as in B-R-I-C-K. This is in the resolution.
You are correct. There is a typo in that. It should be B-R-I-Q.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we.
Any other questions from the board?
Just a clarifying. So they will, they'll report to you, and then you'll report out? Or they would give us updates on their work? Just curious on how that workflow looks.
Sure. The, the intention with this amendment is, is that the board is approving the overall fee structure for this. They will be bringing those individual proposals back through both our project management group that we're hiring, as well as myself, to review and look at. And we can certainly report those individually out to the board as informational items if the board is interested. But there, there really is not an action item that will come out of those unless we get to the cap of our amendment, and then we will look to do another amendment in the future.
Debbie, did you have a question? Okay. Thank you so much. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board? Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Hayes?
Aye.
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Cancola?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our second action item, it's to approve the Clackamas ESD 2025-26 Local Service Plan Agreement, which we just heard about.
I'll move to approve Clackamas ESD 2025-26 Local Service Plan Agreement.
I'll second.
Discussion. Okay, there's none. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board? Director Cancola?
Aye.
Director Hayes?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, approve inter-district transfer criteria for 2025-26.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Had, did this change from last year? It didn't, did it?
No. It's the same.
We just approve it every year. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Fantastic. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board? Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Hayes?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Cancola?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fantastic. Thank you, board. We are to board member comments. Do we want to start at this end of the?
I enjoyed Tom Waters' performance of Annie Junior with Director White and saw Ms. Norman there. It was a great performance at the high school. Also, at the high school, the academic planning night was excellent, really well done. College career, lots of option there. Every department was represented for families doing forecasting, kids of like all ages, young kids, older kids. They had all the clubs that are available. So it was just really well attended, really well organized, lots of good information. Saw Director Hayes there and lots of other individuals. So yeah, just also glad to hear the family focus forum is looking to do something kind of similar for the middle school going up into the high school and also fifth graders going into the middle school. So just really effective transition tool that is being utilized. So that's what I've been up to.
Fantastic. Director Hayes?
I don't have much. I too attended the curriculum night. My son had an absolute blast running around and grabbing all the pens on every desk. So he had a nice little collection going. And then I got to talk to Officer Shockey. That we, yeah, Shockley, is it Shockley? Shockley. Shockley. Got to talk to him after his wonderful first week there. So exciting, but it was really nice to, he apparently is, you know, fitting in really well. I'm really happy to hear that. He's doing a fantastic job, and I've heard a lot of things, great things about him. So that's good. And then other than that, I don't have much. It's, it's quiet time in our house, so it's a good time.
Great.
Yeah. Baseball and lacrosse are right around the corner, so.
Rested.
Yeah. Turning into busy soon.
I'm watching the weather for Thursday.
Okay.
Forecast of freezing rain and snow. I have been very busy with Oregon City together. We are already planning our fentanyl awareness parent information night for May 6th. And we are already working on our assemblies. And I'm going to go speak at OCPD for the Citizens Academy as an alumni now, in a shock secret, but at the drug education night, which is at the end of February. And I will be leaving Saturday for the Philippines. So I will not be available via any communications whatsoever for a week and a half. But I'm going to go attend a grief therapy. And with people in the community that do reach out to me quite a bit as far as fentanyl or addiction, I'll hopefully have more tools enabled to share since I don't know those myself yet. So I'm going to go learn, and I'll bring back, and I'll let you guys all know.
That sounds great. Safe travels.
Well, a couple of weeks ago, we had Literacy Night at Holcomb, which was super fun. I was very impressed by the turnout. It was put on by the ELD teachers and some of the other staff, and it was a blast. We had a ton of kids and families turn out. I want to say there had to be 200 people. Did you go watch? It was fantastic. And so it was really exciting to see so many people jazzed about learning about literacy and getting more involved in that sort of aspect of school. So that was great, which goes right into my next thing, which is Oregon Battle of the Books is getting started. The actual competitions begin the next couple of weeks, I believe. So I know the Holcomb Battles are about to start because my fourth grader is very into it. So that's pretty exciting. Other than that, just baseball starts, so, you know, life's about to get complicated. But other than that, that's about it. But other than that, that's about it.
I got to go to a... Well, I attended a wrestling match against... Oregon City against Lakewood on Friday because it was postponed to snow on Wednesday. So, got to spend my Friday night in the gym. The Pioneers beat Lakewood in the duel. It was a great vibe there. There was a bunch of alumni wrestlers and old coaches there, and it was a good night to celebrate the past and the present with the win. The girls split their matches. We do have a girls' wrestling team, and that's exciting. It was bigger when my son was there, my youngest. But they went out and split their matches, and our boys prevailed. I got to go to a couple basketball games. Our boys are amazing. If you get a chance to go see them, they play above the rim. There's four or five dunks a game. They're playing great. And I also attended the girls. They played hard. And the boys actually beat Westland, so that was great, the game I went to. And the girls ended up losing that game, but they played hard. Want to thank the classified staff for everything they do. Appreciate them. Sometimes they're not thanked because we don't see them as much as the teachers and everything. It could be the janitor that comes in in the evening or the bus driver early in the morning. But we really appreciate them coming up, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Well, I got to go to the Candy Lane Music Program that was actually hosted at Gardner, which was a great opportunity for the Candy Lane families to visit Gardner since most of those students, our students, will then transition to Gardner for middle school. It was a great opportunity to see the music those kiddos have been working on, and they were really proud to share. Their music was obviously bilingual, and it was also really amazing to see the amount of support from families at that school event. There was interest in maybe incorporating some sort of like tour for... Since they break the kids into two different groups. For the second group is always third through fifth, and those families were really curious to see the neighborhoods at the middle school and what that looks like for their students. So, maybe we can incorporate that next year. And then, we had kickoff for community ed basketball, the Little Hoopers. Second grade is not yet above the rim, but we did go to the correct baskets. So, I felt like that was a win. And everyone had a lot of fun. This year, we are partnering with Gladstone to incorporate Gladstone kids in our community ed basketball. And so, that was exciting to see the expanded program. And then, I got sick, and that is it. Dr. Spencer?
I just want to, first of all, thank all of our staff for coming to the listening sessions. Dr. Crane and I and cabinet members, as they are able, are going around to every single school and just listening. So, I'm appreciative of those people who are able to come. We always start off by saying if you can stay five minutes, great. If you need to leave, like, I know this is your free time. So, it's usually at the end of the day, beginning of the day, they're prepped, so I appreciate it. And as always, they can send us questions or emails as they have ideas or thoughts or questions. I also want to just let everybody know, there's lots of questions about legislative changes, fiscal updates, et cetera. I'm in meetings at least once, if not twice, a week just to try to stay on top of it. And a lot of it's like, we think this is going to happen, please wait, blah, blah, blah. So, I've... We've said to staff, you just keep taking care of kids. We'll take care of this part, and as soon as we know, we're happy to share things. And finally, I just want to thank... We had over 35 people volunteer to be in the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and we tried really hard to make sure we had representatives of all schools and communities and levels and perspectives and experiences, and were able to invite a group of 14 adults and two students, as well as a couple board member, ad hoc members, to be part of that and just very thankful for our community's willingness to be part of those planning teams. We have more things coming up for people to get involved in, so we're hoping that people that were not involved in this will get involved in some other things. Some of them said, I really want to be on the planning for Holcomb. And it's like, okay, that's not this committee. Let's send you over here. So, we're hoping to redirect some people and just continue with the work. So, exciting stuff ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work in keeping the bond moving and all of the transitional things that are happening. It's a lot to track. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for sticking with us. We have meetings coming up. The next meeting will be February 24th, will be our work session. And then, our next regular meeting will be March 10th. And with that, we are adjourned.